We are blessed that our mother, we bless us as we live here, that we are so interact between these two communities, who may be source for of insight, of development, and will benefit to our class. Bless this meeting, bless this discussion, we pray with Jesus' name.
And your members in the staff, we are privileged to have you here tonight. Very honoured by your presence. We know that you have lots of hours. We hope we are not too tired to share with the people of Minnesota. We are going to have a lively interaction tonight, and as we wait to hear about the development, the talent which are developed. An interaction that involves questions and answers, hopefully that would enrich all of us as we seek to build both our counties. I would now like to welcome to the podium, Mr. Japhet Kimaike, President of Manayt.
Yeah, thank you so much, Master of Ceremonies, for according to this opportunity, to welcome the regular community members who are in our this hall, and more so to identify the need to reorganize our two governors, from back home, Kisi and Yamira, who I'm being privileged to talk to them, to eat with them, and to know that they love you all. Let me start by saying that tonight, it is a unique, a unique meeting of kind. For most of you who are here, you may not know what I know today. That the two governors, they grew together, they went to school together, they were in the same class, they campaigned together, the same portfolio, they traveled to the United States together, and even they meet our committee members together. Why don't you give a blowout? Want to recognize that they were legitimately elected, and to be the first governors in the new revolution, and we really recognize that. As a community, I want to start before acknowledging those committee members. Besides having been given a very short notice, when they heard that our governors are coming, they had to come together, as we always have done before, in making sure that plans are in place to welcome our guests. Thank you so much, the committee members, who gave in to make sure that the programs should be able to run the way they have been planned. Secondly, for the basic of our community, about 10 years ago, governors, I came from the state of Delaware, because I heard that if you go to Minnesota, the Twin Cities, that's the place you can be able to get most kisses. They are in good numbers, and I was getting sick and tired of only being very few people there, because I care about where we can join hands, because I know how strong it is when you deal with a bigger community. And I've never regretted, because when I came here, I found a community that is diverse, that we may diva with some aspects, but when it comes to a common unity, we have never been shaken by this, that visitors comes and they go, and yet at the end of the day, we find that we still have that kind of unity we are talking about. With that, I want to say this. There is need for us to continue with that oneness. The oneness, when we talk about, we cannot afford the question of one friend, one neighbor, one citizency. And that's why we call a common foundation that has led us all through. In that perspective, I do ask then, what can separate us from one another? If we are one family, one family that can be rich or poor, that reminds us our history, it reminds us our suffering, our impact today is to ask each and every individual to be part of a solution and not the problems that we face every moment. That today, when our governors have come here, we can look at them and say, "You are God-given leadership." And once you recognize God, then you recognize the people that you lead. On the other aspect, I'm trying to say, leaders do not behave like they read vacuums. And therefore, the members you see here, irrespective of the short notes that have been given, they are here to listen to you, they are here to see the kind of vision that you have. Irrespective of how we live far, we can give our testimonies that our mind still focus back home. We have invested so much by sending whatever few resources we do have in the sharing back home. But tonight, I'm reminded to say that, now that we do have a government represented by the governors, the opportunity has come. The time has come, and the time is now, that we can make the difference. Let me request one thing, if possible, and I'm looking directly to our members and our visitors. I want, if possible, you can trust us. If you give us a task, because we don't have leadership here, tell us that you are coming. Let us learn the program on how we can help in making sure that we are involved, so that we can be able to deliver. Because once we come together, we join, that makes a big impact. Because when you trust the people of this great Minnesota here, there is so much, I'm sure, that we can achieve. Today, it's not about our speech. Today is the time for our visitors to talk to us, to give us the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to recommend that I cut my sentiments right here with an expectation that our friends, our governors are here, and it's only about the time to hear what they have for our community. May God bless you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kimaike, President of Manayt. The famous Ronald Reagan said, "That the greatest leaders don't do great things, but they inspire people to do great things." We know you are great leaders. We're looking forward to you inspiring us to greater heights. It's now my pleasure to welcome to the podium, Ms. Lillian Mokendi.
Thank you, Master of Ceremonies. Your excellencies, Governor Kisi County, Governor Envisongwaye, Governor Yamira County, Governor Joni Nyagarama, your able teams that traveled with you to the US. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm humbled to stand before you to tell the visitors that since the time we heard that they are coming to visit us, we swung our doors wide open. Because anytime we hear that somebody is coming from home, whether we know them or not, we take them as family. We are so glad that they are here with us, and we want to say that today's visit makes the first step to our long journey together as partners, that is, Kenyans back home and the Kenyans in the diaspora. I want to wish them good luck in their new offices, as you all realize that they are the pioneers of the county governments. And we want to pray that they start on the right footing, because they are going to be the foundation stones of our counties. I want to thank them so much for the fact that they have realized that learning is a continuum. There are men who have gone to school, among them, there are professors, but they have realized that they have not stopped learning. That's why they came to the US, to learn new techniques and skills in the county governments. I also want to bring to their attention that if they start on the right footing, they will lay a firm foundation for the future of our children. But if they start on a wrong one, the foundation will be wobbly, and it will be difficult for those coming after them to correct the mess they might put in place. So we are sincerely praying for them, that they started right and lay a firm foundation. Your excellencies, we know that now the county governments are going to enable Kenyans to equitably share their resources. And we want to say that we have realized, we have realized that you have the passion for our people. That is why you tasked for knowledge. You want to know how to enable each member, each family back home, to live in a decent life. We pray that you make our counties affluent, that we do not have people who can't go to school, who can't go to hospital, who can't even have clothing on. So we are wishing you the very best in whatever you have come to do. And we want to tell you that all these people you see before you, they have our country at heart. That's why even when some of us have become citizens, we still think of investing back home. We have never bought land in America, but most of these people here have bought land back there, even when they don't live there. So we have our country at heart, and the Bible tells us that it is not where you are physically that matters, but where your heart is, that is where your treasure is. Our heart is in Kenya, that is our treasure. We want to wish you the very best in everything that we are going to share tonight. And we want to pray that after you have given your very attracting speeches, our people will accept to give back to our community by investing back home. We wish you the very best. Thank you, members, for coming. I know you had so many things you wanted to do tonight, but because of the love of our community, you had to abandon everything and come here. May God bless you, and may we all share for the good of our counties. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lillian, for those words. We, you know, we often forget that although we live far, as Ms. Mokendi said, it's also our responsibility to make sure that that child goes to school, that that, that, that sick person gets treated. And I know we've been doing that, so we'll continue doing that with God's grace. At this time, I'd like to invite someone you, you may have seen before. His name is Walter Mongar. I will not call him by his other name.
Every time I come to Minnesota, I'm going to go and see a boy. And I don't think I've ever seen him before. Why are we so sad? And why are some people seated right behind there, who are not in the first class? I'm going to tell you, he's a economist. He's going to tell you, he's going to tell you, he's going to tell you. So my brothers and sisters, please do as they are. There's plenty of space here. There's a lot to occupy. And there's a lot to sell. I'm going to tell you. I will not, I'm going to tell you. My God. I'm going to tell you. 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 First class, upgrading. Your excellencies, this is what we call upgrading. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. And I will take a few minutes, like 45. I'm going to take 45 minutes. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. Let me tell you about what I see. I'm going to tell you. 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 It's excellencies, no. I'm going to tell you. 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 I waited for juice. I didn't tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. It's excellencies. I'm going to tell you. 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 No, I'm going to tell you. In our crew, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. It's not our excellencies. Oh, I'm going to tell you. You know, he's telling me, when you come to Minnesota, I'm going to tell you. 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 You know, if you don't feel me, if you don't feel... I'm going to tell you. Why do you tell people, "You don't feel me"? I'm going to tell you. You feel me. I'm going to tell you. But I will just try to, you know, get my English, you know what I'm saying, right? When I see these guys, I'm going to tell you. So somehow, I will just... I'm going to tell you. But let me tell you something. We had a very beautiful journey coming this way, and some of my brothers had a very difficult time. It's because we are used to a certain way of life back at home. I do not understand, when we were there, we were hungry, we were looking for something to eat. I realize that some of you here, you are very lazy. Very lazy in the sense that, I'm going to tell you. 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 You know, I've been wondering, but you know, we had a wonderful time. And we are not, I'm going to tell you. Allow me to speak in Kisi, because this one, you can never explain it in any other language. And we are not, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. Nature. I'm going to tell you. You know what I'm saying, right? You feel me? Yeah, you feel me? I'm going to tell you. 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 I will not take much of your time. The reason why I'm here, ladies and gentlemen, is because we are brothers and sisters. And when our governors take their time to come and share with us, most of the time, I'm going to tell you. But the governors have taken their time to come and look for you. And does that be the case? They end up digging into your neighbor, look at your neighbor, and tell them, "Are you not very lucky"? Are you not lucky, governor? I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you.
You see why I told you I didn't want to say his other name from his former life? Thank you very much, Mr. Mongar, for that. You know, I, the reason I didn't go to acting school and I went to law school is that I'm naturally boring. See, before Mongar came up here, everybody was sad. Now you are happy. Thank you for helping me out. Now, we're going to move on to the program and talk with, with the guests who came with us, I mean, to visit us. I'm going to start with my, my home county. So there is bias even, even here. I'm going to start with my home county of Yamira. And I'm going to call upon Mr. Butha Manga, who is the majority, the leader of majority in our county assembly.
Thank you, Master of Ceremonies. How are you? Thank you. Maria Tangukubutha, Manga, Yaboro. On the word reps, we are which are Yamira County. Say county, you. On the leader of majority. Leader of majority is a link between the executive and the lawmaking arm of that government at the county level. In Yamira County, we have 20 members elected. Recently, they nominated 13. So in total, we will be 33, as from next month. Kisi has about 45. A big number has been nominated, so they'll be about 60. I'm going to tell you. The National Assembly, we talk about. I call a county. We talk about. And if we want to take our counties to another level, which all of you will be proud of. Again, I'm going to tell you. In that county assembly, we don't have ministers, as it happens with the national government, and with the national parliament. And like there before, I'm going to tell you. Leaders of majority and the whips. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. The governor himself cannot do it. He needs that arm. Asendebu, the member. As I am going to tell you. I'm 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 going to tell you. We are proud of you, people. We are proud of you. You proved that you are each other's keeper, and the care you have taken of us, you are great people. And then, people have huge, huge, huge hopes in you. And then, I'm going to tell you. As busy as they are, to come and talk to you, you are very important people. You are very important people. And then, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. Thank you for being mindful of those people you left behind. And then, county that are without your support. The little support you give to my co-chairman, it means a lot. The governors are team leaders. Without your support, they're not able to move those counties. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. And we promise you, we'll do it. In those, in Yamira and Kisi County, other counties, some of them are county assemblies. They call it a rich problem. Those county assemblies have massive powers. They can frustrate the governors at will. The governor, they will be angry. And if he says, "I'm going to tell you", nothing will move. But I want to thank my brothers, the word reps like me, that so far, throughout our governance problems, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. Like in 90, I'm going to tell you. As lawmakers at the county level, throughout our compromise, we know our boundaries. They know their boundaries. Ours is to oversight, and we promise you, we'll do it. But so far, so good. God bless you, and continue supporting those people back in the villages. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manga. He said something which I think we, we know we should not lose sight of. Our chief executives are here. We have not heard from the national government yet. The last time I checked, they had appointed director, digital, media, and dashboard. You saw that. So we hope we will hear from our national government as well. I would like to invite to the podium Professor Ongaga, who's the chief of staff in Yamira.
Thank you, Master of Ceremonies. And here, I'm going to tell you. It is a privilege and a pleasure to be here in Minnesota. Thanks for the welcome and the warmth with which you have welcomed us. First of all, let me say, your excellencies, I appreciate the opportunity to accompany you to this place. For the short time that we have been here, I guess there are some observations that I've learned. And those observations, I'm going to say what they are. But first, before I do that, as I'm a Dieta, I'm going to go to Kennedy, Ongaga. Professionally, you're the professor, been teaching in the university, Kisi University lately. Before, I went to work in the county as the chief of staff in the office of the governor of Yamira County. The two principals that we have here have been in the office for the last four months. There are challenges we cannot shy away from and say that there isn't. There are great challenges. There are challenges we cannot shy away from and say that there isn't, there are great challenges. And I'm going to challenge you, those who are here. Muwa isikoba techi mbacha, mori gereriye, what's going on down there? We want you to be involved in every sense. There are great opportunities for you to invest back at home, to be involved. Abantuwa, egamo wa, a lot of qualifications, come back home and, as for jobs in the counties, there are great, great opportunities for you to do that. As a matter of fact, I'm a living example. Because prior to going, uh, to the county, like I said, I was in Kisii University, but prior to that, I was a professor at Chino State North Carolina Wilmington. It's not about money that we're looking for, it's basically looking at where we have come from. We all have villages and we all have a story behind those villages. Na mwe kana stega, ekiru mu ta, na ba the story on how you have come here. Don't forget where you have come from. Abantuwa, tu cha, ngere tuka in the school, I think it's time for us to give back to those communities in different ways. All of us have got that moral responsibility. America, never had this stress as chiya, a lot of stress. And I'm very sure each one of you sitting here will say the same thing over and over again. But more often than not, we tend to see, when we're in America, and probably when we are out of this country, we tend to see what we want and we failed to be cognizant of what we have. We are blessed in so many ways, so many ways, that you can also be a blessing to other people, both here and back at home. Be involved. I know the principals have talked about different ways and I'm not going to preempt what they probably going to say or what you're going to ask. Be involved. Invest at home. Hamad Malimo, koworanka, I think, really, anaguan about buying pieces of land at home, most of you have invested in that. Or most of you have sent money back home to invest in land, but that money, in one way or the other, chiya, amedamuro, and just walked away. Let me say this, if you want to buy a piece of land, go through the office of the governor and every penny of yours will be accounted for. We will help in every way to make sure that you have invested, invested wisely. Ayiga, ayiga, ayiga astumore, then say awande, then say awanda, bakusivaya, oteava, inge namaya, kore deki, yes, Abire. You will still need to come back home. I wish you the very best and I look forward to interacting with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Ogaaga, for those words. We're going now to move over to our neighbors in Kisii. And I'm going to ask, um, Dr. Otomo, who's the, uh, in charge of health for the county, to speak to us. Doctor.
Uh, thank you, Master of Ceremony. Your Excellencies, colleagues, brothers and sisters, waire lewea. Yeah, I'm indeed very happy to be here this evening, to share with you, uh, at this moment. Uh, una moywa, Maria Tangenkuru, Dr. Joffrey, Otomo. Uh, I'm in charge of the health services in the county by specialty, um, Ian Disajun. In this place, we're golden, author, I know, a linguologist. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have accompanied this excellency as we go to find out opportunities that are available back home. I just want to say, since we have been here for about a week, or perhaps all the way this way, I have had a chance to interact with many of you at personal level and I'm extremely excited because I find very resourceful individuals, individuals ready to invest, individuals ready to turn lives or give up the situation back at home. I want to stand here and assure you that we are ready and prepared to provide the deserved leadership, to be able to make changes that are not only positive, but bring up our people. The only request I want to make is that we are challenged in terms of resources, both on equipment and capacity. I know at personal level, each one of you can make a contribution. You wouldn't believe, like this afternoon, I will share with a number of you, uh, that we lack things like stethoscopes, thermometers, PP machines, as such equipment. But I know they makes a big difference in the care of our people. You can imagine a simple situation, a old mother presents herself in an outpatient department with an airbag. Without that simple equipment like a PP machine, however genius technician is, cannot be able to tell that this airbag is not out of malaria, but is out of potential. So I want to ask that through our associations here, we can start to put even those simple equipment, so that we bring them back home, we can distribute to our various hospitals, even as we look at the bigger equipment, like CT scans, X-rays, endoscopies, that at specialized level, can make a difference. But I want to assure you that this evolution is a blessing to us at counties because now we can be able to make decisions and prioritize issues as far as our problems. And therefore, that is going to happen, I want you to, uh, uh, give us that support, where you can, at personal level and at communal level, work with us so that we can make it possible for those people we have left back home. And also, uh, few challenges that I see in which touch, uh, these issues of thefty, uh, mischief. And I must say, in words that I was happy that some of the things being mentioned is about our own brothers and sisters, relative, so to say. This is going to continue as long as the levels of poverty remain high. So we must be prepared to invest in those areas that communally change the economic status of our people and these things will be understood. Otherwise, I'm happy, thank you, we will be here to listen and take the positive message whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, doctor. We will now move on to, uh, economic advisor to the governor of Kisii. Please.
Uh, thank you, Master of Ceremony, Your Excellencies and colleagues. Abantuwa, min to, egeri lewea. Masoge. Ushaba, nmo egeri, egeri duwisi. Wa weka pa niya. Uh, as you were told, my name is Nchari Kenani. And I'm an economic advisor to the governor of Kisii County. And my profession teaches me, you know, we rely on two things, the law of supply and demand, and the scarcity of things. We are very curious, economists are very curious, so I'm going to be very brief. Mine is that I'm really excited that we have been so warmly welcomed. Until one would do what you people say here, you won't, you wish to do the backstroke. Yani kurudi ni makidogo na se, but this is too much, we thank you for that. Secondly, like my colleague from Yamira County, who is chief of staff, I've had my stint in the States, I was staying in Arlington with my family, relocated there in 2004. One year later, I moved to Canada with my family. And when I went back home, I met a very energetic old friend of mine, who told me, let's do something together. And having worked in central government and helped central government departments thrive, we say it's true, if we could do it at the national level, would Kisii County be too hard for us? So my challenge to you here also is this, do not fear to come back home, either personally or through whatever support you are sending, because even for me, it has gone so well, that I have not even gone back to Canada. I am now residing in Kisii County. I'm ready to partner with you so that we together can lead a legacy where we say, we set up the foundation for our prosperous Kisii community. We are looking forward to receiving and working with you. And thank you again for your very warm welcome, which shows to us how committed you are to the Mala. May God bless you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenani, for those words. We are going to have a little, uh, break in the program, I'm going to say just two things. When we met with the, the governors yesterday, we had a conversation on what we can do as Kenyans, even Americans, in these counties. One of the ideas that came out, and I'm happy to report that the governors received it very well, is a strategic and deliberate involvement, both financially and even emotionally, in what happens there. Uh, my governor, His Excellency Ngarana, talked about a three-star hotel in Yamira Town, which will be built financed by yourselves. His Excellency, uh, Governor White, talked about a possible diaspora investment center, which we are opposed and he thought it's a good idea. So as we proceed, I would like us to make note of those things that we can do, some we can do right now, but some, we may need some time. So that as they go back, they hit the ground running, preparing it for us. Because someone said, say awande, kenama gisabire, I think that is, that is very, that is very scary. Now, before I call upon, uh, Your Excellency, the governor, I'd like, please come on. She's going to share one of many, many talents with us and then we'll proceed. Thank you very much.
Wait there. How are you guys doing? My name is Catherine Ondari, many of you know me. And, um, I'm going to sing a song, um, it's entitled Never Let You Go. I write songs and I sing and out of this, I support, um, orphans in Kenya through its proceedings from their cities. Uh, the technician is trying to work with the city there. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. 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 I will never let you go. When come the roads around you and lightning all around you, don't give up. When there are many trials to bear and no one seems to care, don't give up, just look up. Even the storms come your way and troubles surround you, don't worry, just look up. Everything will be okay, you've got a brand new day, don't worry, just look up. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will 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 hold on to you cause your mighty to save, I will never let you go. When you feel like giving up, when things don't go your way, don't let go. No matter what the case may be, it's a good of all situations, don't give up, just look up. Even the storms come your way and troubles surround you, don't worry, just look up. Everything will be okay, you've got a brand new day, don't worry, don't worry, just look up. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. I will never let on to you cause your mighty to save. I will never let you go. I will never let you go. I will never let you go. Na kupewa nda Yesuwa. Sita kuacha kama. Wewe uliye nipenda. Hata kama ni kumba na shida nyi. Sita kuacha kama. I will never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will 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 never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go. Never let you go, never let you go. I will never let you go.
That's amazing, I do not know how she does that. If you, if you told me to sing, you remember, Luciveni used to say that he used to make a moving speech. What he meant is that after, as soon as he starts speaking, everybody moves from the hall. I would move this hall out if you told me to sing. Thank you, thank you very much for, for doing that. Uh, at this moment, Your Excellencies, we'll take just a few moments to recognize the people and organizations that have made, uh, your stay in this event possible and hopefully, uh, for the coming few hours that you are with us. I'd like to go through the list. There are quite a few people who made this possible. It's not a few hands, there's a committee, then there are the sponsors. At this time, I want to recognize a rep from each of the sponsoring organizations. I ask you to stand up wherever you are when I mention your company so we can get at least an acknowledgement. Soft Landing Real Estate, Mr. Man. Atamakosita Fadat. Thank you, thank you. Midpoint Medical Clinic, Dr. Karan. United Home Loans, Mr. Nsiv. Mkidha, Mr. Gisem. Manyagatinga, Mr. Kimai. Intercontinental Consulting Group, Mr. Tchub. Metropolitan Health Services, Mr. Gichabo. Lulukrisians, Mr. Angweni. Legal Moamba Associates, Mr. Chakwa. Continue. Brookdale Auto Sales, Mr. Muko. Affordable Event Venues. Ms. Lillian Muggendi. Mr. Richard Auga. Ms. Josephine Manani. I don't like mentioning myself, but the Transatlantic Law Firm, I'm here. And then Gusey Welfare Association for the Water, Kway. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We, we really appreciate your generosity and I'm sure our guests acknowledge your willingness to, to give of your resources and time so that we make this event a success. You know, someone once said that the true measure of a person is how they treat one who gives nothing back. I think there is a biblical verse to that effect, give and expect nothing in return. I want to introduce to you His Excellency Governor Ngawai, who is the Governor of the County of Kisi. I'll just say one word before Your Excellency joins us. Mr. Ngawai, prior to becoming Governor, this past spring, had retired from civil service.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Master of Ceremonies, Wakili, Ongere. Thank you very much, the President of the Association of Manyagatinga, Mr. Tumaiga. And of course, the good lady who talked here, our strong, good lady, Lillian. The entire committee that made this possible, we sincerely thank you. I stand here completely humbled. I do not know, Nyambane, if you are ready, so that probably you can see a small clip of Kisi. For those of you who left there a number of years ago, who have not gone back, you can see what Kisi looks like now, so that you can see that clip before I talk to you. Nyagarama, we were in school together. We were in Kisi School together, we were in the university together. And we have come in in the same party and we've been friends for a long time. Ongere, I had you giving the salutations and the introductions. I hope that my people gave you the proper introductions. I not only have a bachelor's degree and a postgraduate diploma, I also have a master's degree, so that everything is clear. Thank you. So I'll come back, let me defer to Nyambane, then I'll come back and talk to you. Thank you.
Kisi County. The magnificence of the town of Kisi can only be described by its evergreen beauty. Located in the western part of Kenya, Kisi Town has over 100,000 inhabitants that call this place home. With its vast, boundless, rolling hills and evergreen plantations that call this place home. With its vast, boundless, rolling hills and evergreen plantations, Kisi Town will marvel you as we journey through and we take an in-depth look at all it has to offer. Fresh wonders will be revealed for an even brighter potential this part of Kenya has to bring not only to its people, the country, but the world. The organic soils this rich land produces is the lifeblood of this town, which is capable to produce harvests that can do very well in the global economy and even lead a growing infrastructure to the next frontier in business, taking Kenya to the finest economic level the country has ever seen. How, you ask? Boundless natural resources such as tea, coffee, cotton and soapstones thrives very well in the Kisi area. The climate and temperatures make these commodities profitable investments for anyone looking to get into these industries. With Kenya leading in the tea and coffee industry, an investment in Kisi Town will yield at least double earnings, making it sustainable in the business market. Kisi stone, also known as soapstone from Tapaka Hills in Kisi, are used for domestic purposes but has made its way into talented craftsmen's hands who have been able to transform this natural resource into masterful works of art. These handmade carvings continues to be a solid revenue for the town. With over 19 universities in the area, opportunities for learning are plenty. For example, Kisi University with a vision to be a world-class university in the advancement of academic excellence through research and social welfare, caters for over 80% of higher learning. With its partnership program, the university has partnered with Kisi Level 5 Hospital and the University of Minnesota elevated to a referral hospital. Speaking about caretaking, the hospitality industry in Kisi Town has seen quite a change with hotels and resorts that will appeal to any traveler. Whether you choose lodges such as Sameta or Niokoi, you will find a wide variety of selection to suit your needs. Dada's Hotel is another prime destination to entertain and socialize. The ultimate locale for business meetings, extended visits and weekend getaways. With accommodations taken care of, now investors can find it much easier to make transactions with the Kisi business sector by having faster access to banks whose vision is to grow existing businesses while building the platform to be the preferred financial provider in Africa with a global reach. Nestled in a tight spot geographically, Kisi Town is upwards bound and it's taking its people and Kenya into the financial future it's supposed to be. But the question is, will you take Kisi Town there?
Thank you very much, Nyambane.